Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting, February 13, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And at this point, we'll have the singing of "Old Canada." Linda will keep a record of attendance. And item four is declarations of conflicts of interest. And if no declarations, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda with either additions and/or deletions. Are there any of those tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add Viola Desmond. And new appointment for the Lobster District in southwest Nova Scotia. Thank you.
Ken.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to add development committees.
Make the motion, we accept the agenda with the additions.
Moved and seconded by Councillor Mooney and Councillor Landale. All -- any questions?
No questions.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Next, we have approval of the minutes of the -- our meeting of January 9, 2014.
Second.
Questions?
No questions.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. B, Committee of the Whole, January 23, 2014. Any --
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councillor Landale, seconded by Councillor Mooney. Any questions?
Questions.
Councillor McIsaac. Danny.
Thank you, your worship. There was one here, one of these committees, Committee of the Whole and Town Council Meeting that we had, and I'm trying to find it here, that in the minutes, I think it was when Councillor Mooney was late coming in and it shows him absent, but he was here probably an hour later, and I'm trying to find it. I want -- correct it for the record because he wasn't absent for the whole three to four hours that we were here, just probably about an hour or so.
And I remember that.
You remember, yes.
I remember that, Councillor.
So I'm going to try to find it. So I'm just -- notice when I find it, we could correct the records probably after or whatever.
Yep. I think we can do that. That being noted, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
Thank you.
Town Council, January 30, 2014.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councillor Landale, seconded by Councillor Mooney. All those in favor, please -- any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Committee of the Whole, January 25, 2014.
So moved.
Moved by Councillor Mooney.
Second.
By Danny McIsaac, right? And [laughing] I didn't have my eye, but I recognized your voice.
[inaudible]
Any questions? All those -- if not, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. And the last item under six, Town Council, January 23, 2014.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councillor Mooney, seconded by Councillor McIsaac. Questions?
Questions.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Seven A, Meritorious Medal, Councillor Mooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you might not know in the audience and over the TV, we have a gentleman that's from our area, Jeff Kenny. And I'd like to make a motion that a letter of recognition and congratulations be sent to Jeff Kenny on behalf of the council and the town of Yarmouth on receiving the Meritorious Medal. And he will be presented with this medal on February 18 by the Governor General, I guess, in the residence in Ottawa. So Jeff is a local boy. He's done some work overseas in the forces. Linda has all the information. I sent it from the family. And I don't know what Jeff's proper rank is in the service, but Linda has it, and he has a lot of letters in there. So I know Jeff personally, and it's a great honor for himself and his family. So I think it's fitting, on behalf of the town of Yarmouth, to send him a lot of congratulations.
Second motion.
Moved and seconded, counselled by Councillor McIsaac. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Thank you. Seven B, Councillor Landale.
Thank you, your worship. I had a couple of questions asked me regarding snow removal.
Along Yarmouth's Main Street, interesting points were raised, and I guess this is more for the CAO, and maybe something we can't resolve tonight. I don't know if I'll be able to attend the Committee of the Whole, so that's why I'm bringing it up. The issue is snow removal along Main Street. The question was asked that in Milton and in Yarmouth South, apparently our snow plow does service parts of the sidewalks in that area, at least this is what I've been told. And the question is, is why don't we do it along Main Street? I remember in the olden days of the YDC, that was part of their mandate. But nowadays, we have people, businesses along the Main Street of Yarmouth, that have to hire individuals to regularly take care of their sidewalks. And I was wondering if there's some way, I mean, to me, I wouldn't think it would be a big issue, maybe I'm wrong, for that little plow to do a whip down Main Street and both sides, you know, as part of its routine. I know it literally does its thing on my street, on Collins for the schools and that, but it would make, to me, it would make a lot of sense to, if it's possible, to go along Main Street, at least clear the road for the merchants, and if the merchants naturally would be responsible, assault and sand as per normal, and maybe also would give a chance so for the businessmen in the morning, I mean, they're taxpayers, et cetera. So I'm raising the question to the CAO, if we can start maybe looking at this, or is there some way we could examine at least the plow to make a couple of sweeps along Main Street?
Is that the sidewalk in the areas? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The -- I think the answer to the question is within our snow and ice policy. We can review that. I can have the town engineer provide a memo back to council on that, in terms of what the issues might be.
Would a motion be allowed? I'd like to make a motion, your worship.
That council direct staff to explore the necessary bylaws and procedures to see what can be done to institute regular snow plowing of the sidewalks along Yarmouth's Main Street, especially in the area from Grand Street to Forest Street.
I just got a moment. I just got a question. I just got a question on -- I want to make sure I understand this right, Councillor. Are you asking to -- to the small snow plow that does sidewalks, now you're saying that they don't do Main Street, south or north Main Street? The sidewalk plow?
It doesn't do the downtown core.
Oh, this downtown core here?
Downtown core.
Oh, I misunderstood you. Okay, I'm glad I asked that because I was just, I was thinking that when you said south end, north end.
It does it though.
Yes.
It's there now.
Yes, okay. In the downtown core, okay. Thank you, that's very clear now, thank you.
Thank you, worship.
I know that it was brought up before, and it was an issue that when they plow, it would plow up both sides, so it plows in the doorways, and a lot of times, there's just no place to put the snow. So I know that was an issue.
I'm certain that Jeff will direct the appropriate discussion.
Yeah, and I think it would be the thing, it'd be interesting to see feedback. I had a couple merchants bring it to my attention, they've asked for it. I mean, to me, it would help, I know a couple of times, I've gone downtown in the morning early, as I usually am, an early shopper, and it's quite horrendous on the sidewalks, especially where we have an aging population. We want to encourage people to come downtown as much as we can, and the idea of having those sidewalks at least partially cleared would be good. Luckily, a lot of the storefronts are up a little higher, and merchants usually get in a little earlier. I think they would probably be more grateful to have at least a sidewalk ability there. The other difficulty we have is we have a number, your worship, of empty buildings, unfortunately, along Main Street, which is a whole other issue. And unfortunately, they're not as expedient, shall we say, in removing the snow, so you actually have islands around 10:30, 11 o'clock on a business morning, where you'll have a going concern business, which has nice, clean access, but to get to the going concern business, you have to go through a couple of snowdrifts from abutting property owners. And although we have our bylaw enforcement officer doing a very good job in that, maybe this plow would be at least a way to clear a bit of a path for people so that we could help. I think anything to help bring our business downtown would be a help, so that's why I'm glad the staff will look at that and report to our next meeting.
Thank you very much, Councillor Landale. Question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Item C, Councillor Landale.
Thank you, worship. Not to bring up touchy stuff, but it has been touchy lately, namely the Killam Brothers Building.
Sorry about that. No problem. The Killam Brothers Building, I understand we're now going to, or have gone to, or about to go to, the RFP process for that, which is good news. However, it's been brought to my attention, and again, this is for the CAO to look into, that parts of that structure is within storm surge area. In other words, if we have water coming in over the wharves, there is some risk to the heating systems and the fuel tanks apparently in that building. And I'm just wondering if we are looking carefully at that building. I know we're in the process now of an RFP, but I think the whole thing is starting to beg itself, like what exactly do we plan to do with the Killam Brothers Building? And I don't know whether the Waterfront Development Corp. has looked at it, or if anyone's looked at it, but our water is getting higher and higher along the Main Street. And part of the climate change study, and this is why I put it in here tonight, shows that we are going to be seeing more and more and more increase. It's been told to me by property owners along the waterfront that they're seeing differentials of eight to nine inches more of water coming up. And we're at a point, it was down there eyeballing the building the other day, that we're at a point that if we do get a bad storm surge, we could result in some serious issues within our building. So I'm just concerned, that's a beautiful building, I'd love to see the building maintained, I'd love to see the building used, but on the other hand, I'm bringing it up to the CAO, maybe this is something we should look at, since we are looking at the building now. What is our overall plan, and especially, especially the fuel tanks, if they're in a situation of any risk for the environment, is something we should be looking at.
I'll let Jeff speak to that, but my first comment, Ken, is that we are aware of the furnace, and hopefully that will be dealt with.
Yeah, that's really all I can add at this point, is we are aware that water does infiltrate the basement, we are aware of the issues with the furnace, and we're looking into a way of getting that up so it's no longer in danger. Now, in terms of fuel tanks, you're talking about fuel for the furnace? Okay. Not talking about the fueling station?
No.
Okay. Yep.
Item D, under Business, Ken, Yarmouth Agriculture Society.
Well, thank you, your worship. I threw this on simply to be, it's been a very quiet, maybe I've missed a little bit here, but occasionally, we hear good news and bad news. And on Tuesday, I was asked by CBC to do my usual commentary, and I picked the Agriculture Society as my topic. And I just wanted to pass on because I don't think many of the public, I know the council is, are aware that that seems to be working quite well now. There was a joint meeting here, and I just wanted to highlight, since I know we have a few people watching tonight, your worship, that the Mariner Center Board and the Ag Society have met, they've reached an agreement, the exhibition's running next year from, I believe it is the 27th to 27th of July until August the 2nd, and there's a nice linking going on there. There's not that animosity that was put in social media and in the press earlier, but I know in social media, there's been no comment off it, and there's been too much in the press of it, so I thought, well, maybe we should mention that, hey, you know, this matter's been solved, and kudos to Mr. Dares and the Mariners Board, and to Amy Rose and the Ag Society people. Everybody's got it on the same page, and I don't know whether the CAO wanted to add anything to it, but I'm very pleased, it was a very successful meeting, your worship, you were here, and many of us were here at the session, and it was good. And it's nice to see everybody on the same page, working to have an exhibition going. I believe it's its 158th year, so kudos to all those involved, and I know I'm very thankful to see it was resolved.
Thank you very much, Councillor Landale, and indeed, it's important to keep on working together. Eight B, Citizen Advisory Committees, and I'm going to ask Councillor Dennis to assist with the Planning Advisory Committee items. Councillor Dennis.
I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider and, if deemed advisable, amend the land use bylaw to rezone 19 Kemp Street from institutional to low-density residential as outlined in the planner's report.
Second.
Question, or discussions, sorry.
Just a comment, and I think everybody received the same correspondence from a concerned citizen, and those concerns will be passed on to Arthur in the Planning Department, Mr. CAO, I believe. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, or all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Councillor Dennis.
I move to proceed to a public hearing in order to consider and, if deemed advisable, amend the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to enable convenience stores, personal service shops, and restaurants in any designation by development agreement as outlined in the planner's report.
Second.
Moved by Councillor Dennis, seconded by Councillor McIsaac. Any thoughts, comments, discussions?
Questions.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Eight B, Communities in Bloom, Councillor Landale. It's all right. My apologies, Councillor Mooney, you're going to help me with Committee of the Whole items on eight A and eight B.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I move that $500 be granted to the Southwest Fusion Volleyball Club for Karne Vole.
Second.
All those in favor, any, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
I move that the town of Yarmouth write to the Honorable Leo Glavine, Minister of Health, expressing our disappointment on the recent decision by the local district health authority to terminate the services of the executive assistants of the community health board in encouraging the minister to revisit that decision in the upcoming fiscal year.
Can be a second, Councillor Landale, Philip would have mooned it. Any question?
Question.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion, A, motion carried.
I move that the town of Yarmouth proceed to follow the model of HRM for posting of expenses for the mayor and councillors on the town of Yarmouth's website effective April 1, 2014.
Seconded by Councillor Dennis. Any questions? Councillor McIsaac.
Thank you, your worship. I just got a quick question. I was reading this, and I don't know, I think the mayor had suggested, when she was here, when this came up, that it's not from April 1, from 2014, it was from 13 or 12, whatever it was, I think that was her intent. I hope that was her intent, because that's my intent for the 2013 year, that that would be posted up to 2014.
My first question, Councillor McIsaac, would be if it's, if we can do it, if it's possible.
That would be my question.
I don't know from an accounting point of view, I'm not sure that's possible.
Well.
But I don't know that.
I'll ask Jeff, the CAO, is that possible, or is that a lot of work? I mean, I don't want to make this a lot of work, if it doesn't have to be. It seems to me it might be a lot of work, I'm not sure.
I don't think it would be a lot of work. So what you're saying is effective April 1, 2013?
Yeah.
If that's what you want to do, why don't you amend the motion so that we get it right on the books and...
Okay, I move that, I make a motion that we date it back to April of 2013 instead of the 2014.
All right. To, we should vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on the motion. So all those in favor of the amendment which moves it back, effective April 1, 2013.
13, and it just kicks in right after that.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. And then now the motion, that number three.
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
Yep. Move, question.
I just called for questions.
Yes, it's all, okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, motion carried.
I move that a letter of condolences be sent to the town of Willful on the death of their former mayor, Bob Steed.
Second. Questions?
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
I move that the honorarium for town crier David Oly be approved.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Dennis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
I move that correspondence.
Mr. Chair, I didn't interject here because I neglected to add this to the agenda, but it's related to the town crier, so I'll try and slip it in here with your indulgence. We receive correspondence from the town crier. He's been asked to deliver a proclamation on the 175th anniversary of the opening of the Scotiabank business in Yarmouth, and because it is a private business, he requires the consent of council to do that.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Thank you very much, Jeff.
I move that correspondence be sent to the protocol office asking about the status of Prince Charles' visit to Nova Scotia.
Moved and seconded, question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
I move that the town of Yarmouth be designated under the Fences and Detention of Stray Livestock Act.
Moved and seconded, any question? Yeah, we went through that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
Your worship, from Committee of the Whole, January 25, I move that the application from destination Southwest Nova Association be referred to YASDA with the understanding that we follow the same formula as we followed last year in partnership with the three other municipal units, and that we recommend their participation.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
Thank you. I move that the application from Barbara Blaveld be referred to YASDA for their study and review.
Moved and seconded by Councillor Landale.
Question.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
I move that the idea of a statue of the duck trolling retriever be referred to the Waterfront Development Corporation for further study.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Get back to the agenda in order, and Councillor Landale, Communities in Bloom.
Thank you, worship. We had a, I think, whatever the term is nowadays.
Friend.
Anyway, we had a meeting yesterday of Communities in Bloom, and I apologize to council, I didn't have a chance to send things out quickly, but I think much of these are motherhood items, recommendations from the Communities in Bloom Committee. First of all, there was a recommendation from the Communities in Bloom that the Town Council consider increasing the budget for Communities in Bloom to 15,000 for this year to be referred to budget for consideration. That's the recommendation. If there's a second, I'll speak on that. And speaking on that motion, we received a letter, a very encouraging letter, from Communities in Bloom, that Yarmouth might possibly be the site for the National in 2018. Since this year's event is in PEI, and it's quite close, we were going to ask for additional funding to send some of our committee members over. Normally, we only send one or two people, but we thought this would be a nice opportunity where it's so close. We did this way back when it was in Halifax. Many of us, like Councillor Mooney and myself and Councillor Dennis, very rarely go to these things, but because of the cost, but on the other hand, where it is frugal to go, that's why we're asking for the additional funding. So that's what the request was, and it was to be referred to budget for staff to consider.
You've heard the discussion, any more discussion or questions?
Questions.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried.
Secondly, your worship, we would like the Communities in Bloom would like to recommend Angela Goodwin and Vivian Kennedy for membership on, as members of the Communities in Bloom Committee, that's the motion. To speak on that, letters have been received by both of them. They have been kind of sitting with us, they've been coming to our meetings, they're very valued, and our committee would like to have them to be added. There's really no limit to our committee, so the more hands we have, the better it is for us. So that was the recommendation of the committee.
That was my question too, Ken. It's all in order.
Yes, yeah, we have no problem there.
And they're two very good people.
Yes.
Any more questions or discussion?
Just by policy, you can have up to 10 citizen members, I think currently you have five, so this will bring you to seven.
Yeah, we're in good shape. Yeah, and we may be adding more. There is discussion, the Yarmouth Senior High, or the new Yarmouth High School, has a very active green club operating there, and we are looking at ways that we can incorporate them as a member, but we'd like it such a way set up, but it'll be a discussion for future data, so they can have a member come every year to sit on our committee as well. Call for the question.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Contrary-minded, motion carried.
Third thing, there was discussion at the Communities in Bloom yesterday as well regarding the Brown Street parking lot. There was discussion on it. The Yarmouth Garden Club has been quite integral to that over the years. They've been the ones that have been doing a lot of the flowers and, and things going on, mainly in the planting, and the, the town and the garden club have worked very closely. At our meeting yesterday, it was brought to our attention, apparently there's going to be some renovations or some changes to the Brown Street parking lot this summer, and some of the existing boxes, et cetera, may be removed or altered in some way. The garden club would, has some specific thoughts in mind for that, more notably a certain brand of hydrangea, which is quite attractive, that, it's a new, new breed that basically changes color throughout the whole season. So the question came up, if there will be any citizens, there seemed to be in the discussion yesterday, really, it's kind of quiet as to what's happening there, and maybe to you, Deputy Mayor, because I know you're on the waterfront, the garden club has got some thoughts on this, and they would like to, they've brought it up yesterday, the Communities in Bloom adopted it as a motion, and we're kind of wondering in the direction as to how you want to go with this, because we were off the impression, I guess the plan is done for that, or it's almost done, or it's a boat to be done. There was some real question if it'll be done for the summer, or there were some questions we weren't aware of. So maybe before we put a motion, we don't want to put a motion in if, if, if things are already finished.
Things, as far as I know, Ken, aren't finished, and so at this point, I would see taking that information directly to the Activity of the Waterfront Development Corporation. And I'll let Jeff help me out with that.
Thank you. There is a committee that has, has met on a few occasions at least to talk about streetscape improvements on Hawthorne Street, and that would be part and parcel of that project, and so there are citizens involved, and I see no reason why that group shouldn't have representation there. So if there's a contact person, if you can provide us with that, we can make sure that they're, they're involved in that committee.
Given that, I'd like then to make a motion, and Counselor Mooney, correct me if I mess this up somehow, okay, because I'm kind of weaving what we talked about yesterday at our committee. I'd like to make a motion that members of the Yarmouth Garden Club be welcome to make a submission to the necessary subcommittee of the Yarmouth Waterfront Development Corporation who is working on the Hawthorne Street project to bring into action, shall we say, their recommendations for certain plants and presentation in that, in that area. That would be my motion. It's just a recommendation that they, at least will be able to have some input into the, into the body.
I think that's reasonable.
And just to echo what Counselor Langel said from the Community in Bloom's perspective, Vivian Kennedy has some very great ideas, what she wanted to see down in Hawthorne Street, and I think she expressed those to the garden club, and they have some, some great possibilities, and she would like to be involved in the process, just to, just that she can pick some minds. So now that we know that it's not set in stone, and we'll be able to, you know, redevelop, and the thing I wanted to make sure is that citizens had input into the process, and I think this will be a, a great way to access that information, is to talk to as many diverse groups as you can, and I think the garden club is a, a great asset, and I think Vivian and Ange are going to be a great asset on, on the committee. We have a really good, that Communities in Bloom Committee, for the money that we get from council, we get our bang for the buck. So I would like to thank Counselor Langel for chairing that committee, and it's probably the, the best committee I'm on, actually, for the town, so, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, because I didn't, I didn't say this, this part, is that CBCL is the, is the consultant on the project, on the Hawthorne Street project, and the consultant in terms of the landscape design, the improve, the, the streetscape improvements, has not met with the committee yet, they've only met among themselves, and so there's no opportunity missed, there is no, no plan even in sketch form with the consultant yet, so the timing is good, it isn't too late, and their, their idea should be able to be incorporated.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Yeah, because the, thank you Phil for nice comments, because the garden club has been our stewards really in that parking lot. I mean, they've been wonderful, they've gone down, they've done all the planting, they've done the weedings, we've helped them out with the cost of the plants, but the actual physical labor, and after the project is done, I think it's very important, our committee feels it's very important to keep that relationship alive with them, and we're very happy to have members of their club now on our actual committee, which is really refreshing, it gives us that little extra oomph to it, and that's, that's what we were hoping to achieve. So thank you for that, and thank you for the motion. Call for the question.
Thank you very much. That was good discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Now we're down to...
No better than that, Jim, we're not finished yet.
My apologies. I wasn't looking forward to the end, I was looking forward to the next item.
We're going to do a selfish plug here, Counselor Mooney and Counselor Dennis and myself here. Next Saturday, we're having our first Spring Gardening Fair, which is going to be happening at Yarmouth High School. Friday night here, we're having a Communities in Bloom reception, open to the public. The idea is to talk, showcase what we do as a committee, and then on Saturday, at the high school, we've arranged for 12 workshop sessions to get ready for the spring. We're optimistic, and those who looked out their window and looked at their ice dams like I have in the roof, and probably leaking roofs, think that spring is on the way, and we're optimistic. We have some excellent presenters, we have everybody from Bill Rose and Charlie Jess talking about vegetable gardens and organic gardens, we have Jim Spencer coming in from Shelburne, who's going to talk about shrubs and trees and how to properly care for it. We're going to talk about our town compost, there's a session on that. We have sessions also that are going to be on a variety of use of equipment, weed control, weed management, Canadian Tire has been involved. It's going to be a kind of a fun day at Yarmouth High, and it's no cost, we invite the general public to participate, and we're kind of hoping that a good crowd will be there. So it's our first attempt at this. It's interesting that we've had requests from far away of groups that would like to come in to actually present to this session, but we're a little nervous, we don't know how many people will, we may have more presenter than people showing up, but we've had people call from Digby and Shelburne. We may have to go, Counselor Dennis, to your Room Levy Group for funding next year. So it, it is quite popular, it's going to be neat, because we're starting our, our Spring Gardening next week, and also we'll be using it to showcase to start our, our Peeper Watch Project, which we started last year, and we'll be putting in place this year as well. So that's happening next weekend, Yarmouth High, 9:00 on Saturday morning, or drop in here at Town Hall next Friday night at 7:00, 7 to 8 for a, a meet and greet and learn what all the good things are happening in Yarmouth.
Thank you, thank you very much. Hopefully it will be well attended, I intend to be a spectator at that event. Under Reports for Information, we have the minutes of meetings, 8A is Occupational Health and Safety, December the 18th, 2013. And any questions or as a result of those minutes being in our agenda? And also 8B, the minutes for the meeting of December the 4th, Yarmouth County Solid Waste Park. Any questions or comments to any one of us? Do we receive those by motion?
Nope.
Just for information purposes, okay? 8D, the mayor's report, Mayor Moot is not here, she's representing our town as she does so well in other parts of the world. Nine is questions for committee chairs. Any, any questions of any, each other tonight? If not, we'll move on to 10, the additions. The first one, Counselor Mooney, Viola Desmond.
I think I'm Ken Langel here pretty soon. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, after the last provincial election, our, our new Liberal government is going to designate a holiday, I think, starting next year in February, and there's been requests sent around the province to name this day, so they want to name a day, and I think the Town of Yarmouth recommend that they name this day the Viola Desmond Day in February.
Second.
As, as you know, with Viola Desmond, she's our own Rosa Parks, February is African Nova Scotia Month, and I think it would be a great honor to put this name forward.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions or comments? Are we the only, who else, is someone else, other municipal units recommending?
I think there's other municipal units that are doing the same thing, I think New Glasgow, I think, has done it.
Yeah.
And that's her hometown, and I think they're asking not only submissions from municipal units, but also from individual citizens across the province, so I don't think there's a better honor than, than what we can do for, for that.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. Immigration Navigator, I didn't get all the highlights.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's going to be a motion come out of this, Mr. Chair, but as you might not be aware, or people in the public might not be aware, that our immigration navigator for this end of the province lives in Bridgewater, and I don't know how to rectify that, and with the report that came out yesterday with Mr. Ray Avani and the commission with John Bragg-Irene that went across the province, they're going to say one of the leading things to increase economic development in Nova Scotia, especially rural Nova Scotia, is going to be immigration. So I don't know how we can compete on an equal footing if we don't have an immigration navigator right here in our own community, and maybe I can ask the CAO, would that be one of the concerns of maybe the new REN? I know that we're going to have all the municipal units in this end of the woods have committed, which is great news, that came out today, but would this be one of the things that they would look at?
I would expect that it would be. The, the original immigration navigator for our area was employed by our former RDA, and it was only when, when the former RDA ceased to operations did that position move out of there, and I think it was maybe under CBDC that they had an arrangement and...
And part-time, I think.
It was part-time, then now that's gone to the wayside. So once we have our REN up and, up and running, I would think that that would be a regional project that would make sense for them to lead.
And I think we're having a meeting with our MLA in another, or a week or so, this might be something that we bring up with the Honorable Zach Churchill.
All right, just for informational purposes and...
Yeah, I think, I think that's something we can bring up with the minister, and that's something that will be brought up with the new REN. So that's one of the longer-term goals of that, that report, so I think it's important that we have somebody of that caliber in our area.
Third item, new appointment.
New appointment, Minister Gail Shea, National Minister of Fisheries, has appointed a, a points person for the lobster fishery in southwestern Nova Scotia. So I'd like to make a motion that we send Minister Shea and Greg Kerr a letter to have this person placed in a Yarmouth office.
Second.
He's a former, I don't know if he's a former Deputy Minister of Fisheries in Nova Scotia, but he's a former Deputy Ministers, I think it's either Nova Scotia or New Brunswick, he's been appointed by Gail Shea to help with the lobster industry here in southwestern Nova Scotia. I think anything from marketing to, to long-term viability to, you know, I think, I think everything's on the table, and this is all in southwestern Nova Scotia, so I think we're in the geographical middle of, between Shelburne and Metag and Digby, I think it'd be a great opportunity to have that points person right here in Yarmouth, so that's why I'm making the motion.
Moved by Counselor Mooney, seconded by Counselor McIsaac. Any more questions or thoughts on the motion? And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Development Committees.
Just, just a question, again, for the CAO, it was brought to my attention that the municipality of the District of Argyle has not one but two development committees that they've been putting in place, and I realize they do have staff support. It's kind of concerning, because the other day, as I was driving down along Main Street after the recent snowstorm, just to look around and snow removal, et cetera, I couldn't help but look at the harsh state of our Main Street, and I know we've had discussions around the table about this. Where do we stand with development in the Town of Yarmouth? I know we're putting our eggs in the REN basket, but I'm kind of curious, because I understand Argyle has its own development group, and I've heard that Clare is heading in that direction as well, or maybe in that direction. I don't know about the municipality of Yarmouth, but in Yarmouth itself, being a regional center, I'm wondering, should we be more active in development than where we are? We're kind of been in a no man's land for about two years here, waiting and waiting and waiting, and little comes to those who wait, we have to go and grab, or at least be proactive, and I'm just wondering, question one, where do we stand? Has there been any discussion with regard to the development committees that are happening in Argyle and what they're doing? And most importantly, which I'm curious, was where do we stand? I, was there something on REN today, I must have missed it, I was at work, is some good news on REN? I didn't get any emails, or where it's happening, or is something going there? I'm just curious where we're at on that.
Yeah, and I think, so, Mr. Chair. Yeah, there was, there was a release that came out today, and I think one of the points person was Alain Muse, the CAO from, from Argyle was quite enthusiastic about the response from all the municipal units, so, and Michelle Sampson, I think, is the one that made the announcement today, so, and I think they quoted Alain. So I know, I think everybody's on board from, from the original group that we had, I think, Jeff?
Except for Barrington.
Except for Barrington? And they were, they were iffy anyways, right, at, at the start, so we didn't think they're going to be participating, but the Minister of Economic Development made that announcement today about the REN, and I think we're going to be the first one going in Nova Scotia.
Oh, let Jeff go.
Jeff.
So the question, question around the Communities in Argyle, I'm aware of, of Brendan LeGrand Dure's position. Brendan is a, is a community development officer, so the emphasis in, in her role is, is more on community development as opposed to economic development. She helps organizations in the community source funding from federal provincial sources, that kind of thing, and I don't want to sell her short, I mean, I'm sure there's many things that she does that I'm not, not aware of, but she, that's one of the people that perhaps is, is working with one of the committees you're, you're referring to. I believe there's also a position that's funded through Acadian sources that is specific to economic development. I don't know what the connection with the municipality is, but I'm aware there is a position. As far as we're concerned, obviously we're not involved in either one of those initiatives, otherwise you would know. We have, and I say we, I, I have had some discussion with Ken Moses, my counterpart with the municipality, around whether we should be doing something locally and collectively around economic development, and I think there's, my sense is there's interest. You know, putting together terms of reference or parameters around that is, is important, because I think we need to be clear that we don't create right out of, right out of the, out of the chute, a duplication between a REN and, and the local person, so as long as we can keep the mandates separate, clear, and, and perhaps have a partner involved, I don't think it's a bad idea to look at at all.
Because this bodes the, the question, if I am living in India, or I'm living in Japan, or I'm living in China, and I want to locate a business in Yarmouth, Nova Scotia, Canada, and I want to learn about it, first of all, if I go on the internet, I'm, will probably be shocked, because we're just all over the map on the internet. Luckily, the Town of Yarmouth website is nice... Luckily, the town of Yarmouth website is nice and high, but there's a real oomph, a mess of other sites that are around there that we, I've always said is an issue, we really need to address to get that presence there. But the question I'm asking is, where do I go? Like, if I'm actually thinking of putting a widget plant at Yarmouth Airport hypothetically, and I decide I want to learn about Yarmouth, I know our council has given direction for a brochure slash whatever, whatever to happen, and I'm hoping the CAO will give us maybe a little update on where that is, so there's that happening, but then, on the other hand, where do I go to get the ball rolling, to find out about Yarmouth, to locate? Is a call made to Town Hall, and if a call's made to Town Hall, who gets, does it go to you, Jeff, the CAO? Does it, I mean, I'm kind of hoping that, why I'm raising this question, is that whoever gets the call is a nice, bright, cheery person who's selling our community, and not somebody who says, "No, no, don't come here, it's a terrible place." I mean, we don't want that, we want to have something positive. I'm just curious, in light of this no development, and even with the REN, and I, again, thank you, Counselor Mooney, for this, I was unaware of all this today, and I'm looking forward to the press release, maybe we'll all get copies tomorrow or something, but the question is, is where do we, what happens there?
Thank you, Your Worship, so the first question is, where are we with the information package, RFP? The package is together, the ad will appear in Tuesday's Vanguard, or Monday afternoon's Vanguard, and we've allowed three weeks for responses to that, and so that is underway. That was, took a little more time to put together than I originally anticipated, but found the time and got it out. So that's number one. If a company in India is interested in setting up a business in Yarmouth, so they've identified Yarmouth out of the gate, and they call Town Hall, very likely the phone call gets referred to me, and so my resources in terms of how do we help them, starts with conversation. What are you interested in? We don't have a good inventory of our assets, so it would be a discussion that would lead to what you're looking for, what I can generally tell them, what I can promise to provide them. If it should be that the mayor would receive the phone call, if they called and asked for the mayor, she would receive it, and I suspect her response would be quite the same, is welcoming, and, you know, obviously try and reel in the business, but at the same time, not pretend that we know everything off the top, like, get some contact information and be able to follow up. The province does have a branch, and I'm trying to rack my brain right now, I haven't, I've lost it, is, they have a branch, an agency, that deals with international business leads, and so that would be the people that we'd want to bring in, and have us kind of vet the business, understand that it's illegitimate, and help us to put our best foot forward. If a lead comes to them, now this is the other, the flip side of it, if a lead comes to the province and looking for a place to set up in Nova Scotia, that's where they want to interact with the RENS. They can't represent 55 or 54 municipalities equally and everything, so they're going to depend on the RENS to have that overview of the assets and the possibilities within the regions, so as they talk to a business from India, they might realize that the best location is probably in southwest Nova, they'll deal with the REN, the REN will obviously try to reel it in, and that is, that's probably where a local development person will be most helpful to us, in that sort of situation, is to really know where our assets are, to talk to us as a municipality, if there were a municipal infrastructure that was required, whether it's a road or water, to seal the deal, they would deal with us. So probably, given how small we are on the global map, the call is more likely to go to the provincial level first than to come to us, but if it does come to us, there's nowhere else that phone call is going to go, other than my office or the mayor, unless they ask a specific question about land use bylaw, or about infrastructure, it might get down to our engineer, so.
Thank you very much. Next item is, are there any more additions that I didn't mark down? I think we're all set. Next item, item number 11 is Approval of Invoices.
Second.
Move by Counselor Landell, seconded by Counselor Mooney. Any questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded, motion carried. And then, item number 12 is the date of the next meeting, and there's a consideration of a reschedule to March the 20th.
Motion that we schedule the next meeting to March 20, 2014.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That will be advertised.
Yep, yep. Now we need a motion to move into in-camera.
So, raising a point of order.
Go ahead.
Thank you, I'm raising on a point of order. I'm kind of concerned with our agendas, I noticed we have a shotgun approach to in-camera. We have a list there that says, that pretty well has everything on it but the kitchen sink, and I believe under MGA, we have to be specific as to why we're going in-camera, whether it is legal, whether it is property, whether it is personnel, or whatever, and I'm a little concerned from a public perception, because I have been asked, as people looked at the agenda, and they said, "My goodness, you guys discuss all those things in camera," and my observation was, no, not necessarily, and I'm wondering, Your Worship, for direction here, but I really would feel more comfortable if we, you don't have to go into specific information, but if tonight, we're going to be discussing, I understand, one item is a property item, and I have no problem, that's within the MGA, but could we have the scope of the other items, as to what, how they fit within the Municipal Governments Act, before we go into in-camera? Because I can't vote for a motion to go in-camera unless I know why I'm going in-camera, you know, I mean, and that's, but to go in with a shotgun approach, i.e. five items on a list, and when I have no idea what they are, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, and I think for transparency to the public, we should be specifying, okay, we have a personnel item, we have a legal item, we have these specific items, because I don't want people to think that we're going behind closed doors and discussing things without being transparent.
Well, thank you, thank you. I have three items to discuss in-camera with council, they are ones with regard to lease, ones with regard to legal, and the other ones with regard to contract. The reason we've taken this approach is that there are a number of boards and agencies that we have, excuse me, members of council sit on, and there may be items that arise at those boards that are dealt with in-camera, that this is the opportunity for them to brief council on those items, and maintain the confidentiality through the in-camera process, so I might not be aware of a question that might arise out of one of those situations, so rather than not have it addressed somehow in the agenda, we've taken this approach, but always open to ideas.
I have no problem going to in-camera on those three items, and I feel if any other council member has an in-camera item stemming from another board or agency, that should be shared with the CAO or the mayor in advance of any meeting, so that at least we're apprised of what it is. I'm a little shell-shocked from a previous council, when we suddenly were hit behind the scenes with major decisions unprepared, so I would feel that if any counselor has an issue that's arising from a board or an agency, that they feel need to be shared with us in an in-camera, that should be discussed with our CAO by all means, and then the CAO would make a recommendation for it to be added, so for tonight's purposes, I'd have no problem, you know, supporting an in-camera on those three items.
Thank you very much, Counselor Landell, Counselor McIsaac.
Thank you, Your Worship. Jeff, the other one on personnel and property, property sale and purchase, is that, I know personnel is usually an in-camera, am I correct?
Yes, always.
Always, and property sale and purchase is usually an in-camera item, where you're discussing prices and everything, so if we're going with the three, the, I don't know what the leases are, that leases that had prices, prices in, that we're going to talk about? Is that one of the things we're going to talk about? And legal is probably another matter we're going to be talking about, that is, have to keep things competent, and contract, I mean, it's pretty straight up, and the other two fits into the five, so.
I don't have anything under the other two.
Okay, so what I was, what I was thinking, there was talk some time ago around the table, that we would just put in-camera items, and looking at this, I never gave it a thought, Counselor Landell, but when you brought a point of order, and I'm looking at these, these items, the five that are there, I was thinking that perhaps I misunderstood when I made the motion to go in-camera, and then when you started to talk on it, I thought, well, these are just some of the topics we could talk about, while, and I get what you're saying now, if you don't know what these topics are, before you go in-camera, you know, I mean, for the public out there, they don't understand, but these are personal matters that have to be discussed behind closed doors.
Yeah, exactly.
That's correct.
Exactly.
Okay. Then I was right by moving the motion to go in-camera. Great, thank you.
Question?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Thank you very much, and thank you very much, and Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.